Permit applied for by April 1st. There were a number of regulations that were in the conditions, the notification to neighbors, the maximum number of renters based on the number of bedrooms, required use of parking, of the legal parking. But there were no, the specific portions that were removed were cap on the number of days per year that they could operate. They wanted a planning commission to look at that. And the owner occupancy requirements was another one they pulled out.
Six things?
There were six things they wanted you to look at, but not all of them were currently in that draft. So I'll go over what those are right now. The direction of the planning commission was to study and make recommendations on the amortization. The amortization, as it was written yesterday, included, that would have been included in yesterday's ordinance, was, would have covered non-conforming situations with the STLU permit specifically. The issue was that if zoning changes and further reduces the areas where they're allowed, that there would effectively have to then be two layers of amortization. So I think that they felt it was safer if we just dealt with the entire amortization process, or the grandfathering, as it was referred to at the planning commission level. The second was owner occupancy requirements. Third was residential zoning, where they're allowed. Rental limitations, which would be how many days per year it could be a vacation rental could operate. They also discussed capping the number of vacation rentals. They effectively did that with the, by limiting the people who could apply for an STLU permit on March 15th. And they also discussed density. There was some discussion about clustering. We'll get into more of that. And then the other part was looking at best practices and policies from other cities, and just making sure that what we're doing is consistent with the effective implementation of these types of regulations in other cities. So staff is looking at an anticipated timeline to return to the city council in a timely fashion, and that would require a rather expedited process, starting with next Wednesday, being a planning commission study session, where staff is hopefully going to provide a menu of potential ordinances. We'll go over kind of how we plan to develop that a little bit later. The 17th, we're reserving as an additional study session, if needed, if we don't get as much direction on the 10th as necessary, or if there's a little bit of refinement necessary, before we come back for a public hearing, which we're looking at the 24th as being the ideal date to present an ordinance to the planning commission. For some reason that date is not met, then the March 2nd date would be a reserve public hearing at planning commission. And those dates, if we can meet them, should get us in line with presenting an ordinance to the city council for introduction.
Again, just to note, meeting on the 10th and the 24th, that's the only items on the agendas, so it'll be a meeting dedicated solely to that topic.
I've got a question, Adam.
Yes?
When we first got this presented to us, it was a land use issue, and we were going to determine whether or not it was compatible with residential. I don't see that up here, or is there a pre-gone conclusion that that decision's been made?
No, that's, well, going back, so item three, residential zoning, that's one of the questions that we have. That was basically the question that we had. And the rest of these, more or less, were added to the planning commission's docket from last night. A lot of these other issues we're hoping to capture in the STLU ordinance that the city council was voting on. They decided not to include all of these things and move them into the planning commission's purview.
I do have a question here. I had requested that we receive copies today, tonight, of Title 17, hopefully 17.04. Do we have that tonight?
You do.
All right. Do we also have the Chapter 3.24, the transit occupancy tax that was currently in effect?
We do.
This evening?
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
What I want to do is get through staff's proposed timeframe and approach, then we'll go into some planning commission studying. So I'd like to start with a very broad stroke and look at residential purposes and intents. Jim, there's that one handout. I'm going to hand out sections of the general plan and the... I have sections of the general plan and the zoning ordinance that specifically get at the intent and the purpose of residential zones. The general plan, being very general, talks about the overall goals and policies for residential neighborhoods. The zoning ordinance is a little bit more specific in its description. But ultimately, staff anticipates using this as a guidepost for the zoning that would be proposed. Now, like I said, we're going to come at this with a menu of options. And so there's potentially different interpretations you could make about the intent of residential zones as they relate to allowing vacation rentals to be included. It could go from very restrictive, where the idea is to protect residential neighborhoods from vacation rentals. It could be to provide zoning standards that allow a commingling of sorts. But ultimately, staff's going to be looking at the purpose and the intent as our starting point for proposals. So I'd recommend that you look at those and, you know, familiarize yourself with the purposes and the intents, so that we're all on the same page. It would be nice to sort of discuss that a little bit tonight, but before we do, I want to continue the PowerPoint. But just know that that's where staff's starting from. So that would be, the first step would be to look at the appropriate zones. I think that's really the, that was what the planning commission started looking at, and I still think that's a good place to begin this discussion. From that, we'll create menu options that basically span from more restrictive to less restrictive, and look at a couple different ways that we could regulate these uses throughout residential zones. There will be discussion about mixed-use zones, because there is residential and mixed-use. So I may only be saying residential zones, but mixed-use will be included as well. And then from, once we create the menu options and we discuss them at the next planning commission study session, and we get some feedback on what is, you know, identified as more appropriate than others, then we will develop a staff ordinance, which is going to be our, taking the entire discussion and trying to boil it down into one effective ordinance. And that ordinance is going to cover the permitted zoning, as we anticipate it now, would cover the permitted areas of zoning, density and clustering requirements, owner occupancy requirements, rental limitations. Like I said, it could be maximum number of rental days, minimum rental lengths, other development standards. Additionally, we would look at processing requirements, like where a CUP may be required, or if just administrative, an additional level of administrative review is necessary. And then, once we have those standards in place, we would look at amortization of non-conforming uses. So there was a number of...
Excuse me, if I could, just to kind of get this edge-wise, I think maybe as an overlay for all of those items, at least, I don't know with the other commissioners, but I'd like to see, as we move forward with that, and as you present material to us, I'd like to see some information about enforcement, so that some of these things might be difficult to enforce on specific type of zoning, so that's something I think we need to focus on to make sure that happens.
Yeah.
I have a question here. And the question is, do we have a copy of what they passed last evening, so that we have that information about what they passed, the ordinance?
I believe that isn't there.
Okay. And I think that would be important, because you asked what the enforcement is, that's exactly what they passed last night, were the rules and regs, so.
It's the enforcement of the rules and regs.
Right.
And, you know, when we, when you get to drafting the ordinance, we'll have code enforcement involved, so that, you know, they can help identify what things are... There's going to be certain things in regulations typically that are really black and white, and therefore easy to enforce. Others are going to be more difficult, because they're harder to quantify. And we'll identify those as we go through the process. Also, with all those steps, we'll try and pull from other cities to give you examples of how other cities have dealt with those particular topics.
So there's a bit of requested information from the planning commission. There's, as Wayne mentioned, the, two sections of the municipal code, we have those. There were a number of questions that were emailed, and they're just basic questions about how many vacation rentals do we have, you know, where are they, what are they, you know, how many are in relation to how many dwelling units the city has versus hotels, those kinds of questions. I'm going to pass those out, so that you have all the answers to it. One of the things that came up at a previous study session was more comparisons with cities, especially closer in proximity to San Clemente. That handout has a chart that talks about, that basically just goes through where, what cities have outright banned them in residential zones, which ones have banned them in low-density zones, which ones have allowed them, with a little subsection of, are there any highly restrictive aspects of those allowances? And then, there's also, I included cities where they just simply haven't done anything yet, and there's nothing coming down the pipeline. So there's some of that information. I believe that the... So this information should help with the discussion next week. There are a couple maps that we put together. These are the ones from last time. Chris, Chris put the map in, just in the presentation folder. Yeah.
This is just an example, you know, what we're trying to provide in terms of information for you. This is, we've taken different, basically polygons encapsulating different areas in town, and this is the medium-density residential, you know, around the North Beach area. And then, just to give you an example, what we can do is, in this particular case, in this particular area, there are a total of 4,439 units, and there are 38 registered rentals, or vacation rentals, in this particular location. And then... Did he tell you what the radius was for the spheres?
They were 100-foot spheres. And they were, there were buffers around, I believe there were buffers around the average lot size. So the sphere would be like 150 feet around.
Okay. So what our IT guys did was also, in this particular area, just giving an idea for separation, in this case, if you used a 100-foot buffer around a property for separation, you could fit a total of 96 maximum vacation rentals in that area. That's, this is just, if you took a, if you put, if you had a 100-foot buffer, basically, which would be a 100-foot radius or a 200-foot diameter, and you stuck them in that area there, the most you could get, if you had that separation requirement, would be 96 vacation rental locations.
In that, in this shape?
In this particular...
In everything that's...
So, that's just an example of what we can do in terms of, when we're looking at separation, and, you know, if you said 100 feet or 200 feet, we can give you that kind of information.
One thing to consider, though, too, is some of, there are some single-family homes here, there are some duplexes, and there are some apartment complexes with six or eight units in them. So it would be useful, probably having a formula that enters the density in there, I don't want to get, I don't want to get too complex.
No.
But there's a lot, even though that's a residential medium, there's actually a lot of different types of dwellings.
Types.
Well, of course, yeah. There's a variety in every zone, you know, in terms of the housing type.
Right. The, it was also suggested briefly last night, that instead of a radius, it would be per block or something.
Right.
So, you know, that's something to also consider.
And, yeah, this was just an example of what we can do to help you if you need information.
Yes.
Okay.
That was a very important thing, Adams. I think some of the things we just talked about on this map would be keyed if we could find from other cities as best management practices, too, as far as geographic dispersion per block, you know, cast a wide net on some of those type of things we just discussed.
Coming in towards the end there.
Yeah. Are you through with your presentation, so we can start asking questions and talking?
I am.
You are? Okay.
There was one other piece of information that I'll hand out. This is a coastal commission staff report for Solana Beach and their vacation rental. It was part of their LUP application, and it gives good information how the coastal commission views this particular topic. So there's a good discussion in there, and gives you a little bit of background.
Okay. If I could ask a couple, okay, if you have questions, yeah, we'll start with questions, and we'll start from the right. Thank you. It's my understanding that the general plan, the zoning, the land use plan, municipal code, and the housing element all need to say the same thing when it comes to something like this. So is that what we're going to do also, is be certain that all of these plans, zoning, land use, and so forth, all are in concert with the same wording in all of this?
All of those documents should be similar. What we're not, what we're not proposing at this point is a general plan amendment.
No.
So everything that we do should be consistent with the general plan.
I'm just going to say this outright. I've been following the city council deliberations, and the meeting before last night, the, what we call, what we're now calling amortization, it was the grandfather clause was introduced at the last minute there. I had, I've been very concerned that we have not received the type of legal communication with regard to grandfathering, or phasing out, or amortization. And I think that is so important, that we receive that information from our legal council. I don't know if that was really afforded to the city council, but in their deliberations, it appeared that it really wasn't discussed a great deal. That is something that we need to say, and need to deliberate on. My question to you is, are we able to amortize in one zone and not the other zone?
I assume by you, you mean me, Mr. Alisson?
Yes.
Yeah. Mr. Chair and planning commissioners, amortization is allowed when a use is rendered no longer permitted, and therefore non-conforming, in any zone. So if we take a different example, let's take a convenience store that's currently permitted in a neighborhood commercial zone, but not in a C1 zone. If that were then not permitted in a neighborhood commercial zone, you could amortize those in a neighborhood commercial zone. The same thing would apply here. So amortization is available as a safety valve, as grandfathering, it's a pretty simple process, we've discussed it in the context of a sign code. If uses were not allowed in one zone, but in another, amortization could certainly apply there. The typical timeframe that has been accepted by courts in California as permissible is a five-year timeframe for these kinds of uses.
Okay, I'm going to stop you there. I need examples, specific examples, from other cities with regard to vacation rentals and amortization. Do we have that?
We can take a look at that.
Okay. That is what we need. I'm not interested in taking a look at amortization of other type of, for example, rental units or something of that nature. I'm interested in taking a look at what other cities have done, and what's defensible when it comes to vacation rentals.
Yeah, we can certainly look at that. The question of defensibility may be an open question. If it hasn't been challenged in court, then we don't know if it's defensible. We do know what's defensible in terms of other types of uses, which acts as guidance in amortization cases. That case law's decided, I could discuss it right now, but we can take a look at other cities as far as vacation rentals, STLU-type uses.
That would be essential, because I don't know if San Clemente wants to be in the forefront of amortization of vacation rentals.
Based on my prior view of case law with amortization, I'm not aware of cases out there that deal with amortization of these types of uses, we can take a look at that. But there is the danger with this type of issue of being on the forefront, but we can take a look at that, I would not write that answer in stone. I do know what the amortization laws are with regard to general uses. Again, vacation rentals, we'll take a look at that.
Because the chart that we, the chart that we have here shows a number of cities that have just banned them in residential areas. And so if they banned them in residential areas, what, I'd like to know what has happened with regard to that as far as legality.
We can look at that, but I can tell you, if a use is banned that has currently been, or has been previously permitted, it becomes a legal non-conforming use. And that use is then permitted for as long as it doesn't significantly change in terms of scope and magnitude. If there's no amortization that's applied to that use, then it's allowed in perpetuity, again, until the use changes, very similar to our discussion with poll signs previously. The standard practice throughout California, the more conservative practice is not to apply amortization schedules. So my guess would be that when you see a ban in a city, there likely isn't an amortization schedule provided, precisely because it's safer to go with a simple legal non-conforming approach. We can take a look at that, though.
And also, instead of amortization, if in fact there are other alternatives other than amortization?
There really are three general alternatives. One is legal non-conforming, the other is amortization, and the final is simply to pay, essentially, fair market value for the use. If a use is required to be ended, and that is immediate, then there's a requirement of paying the fair market value, exactly as we discussed in the context of signs. Those are your three general options.
Commissioner Blackwell, I think, has a question.
Yes. So Mel, you mentioned five years is a typical term that's been used in other cities, right? Five years?
Mr. Chair, planning commissioners, there have been shorter time periods used as well. Five years is the standard time period that's seen as defensible and often upheld by the courts. That arose initially from a case out of LA involving a plumbing store, where fixtures were paid for and added to the store, that were permanent. And then there were cases that followed on it that also had the five-year application. There are cases that have gone with a much shorter time period, but those have been both won and lost.
Okay. I would think, just, if we were going to lean in that direction, we'd be considering a reasonable timeframe in these cases, when a permit's issued for the use, and we have dots all over the map, we know where these legal uses are at this point. There's a ramping-up time, advertising, you know, the folks that set a reservation well in advance, up to a year in advance. So, you know, any time at a year, maybe beyond into the second year, just to clean matters up, and give folks a chance to get things together and move in the direction that we end up moving in, maybe even two years might even be considered reasonable in this case. So it's just something to think about.
Okay. Just a minute. Mr. Smith, do you have a question?
I do. Really, it's a definition. Vacation rentals, by definition, does that mean that you are spending money to occupy a facility? Is that how you see it? It has to be paying of money?
Yes.
And the reason I'm saying this is that another thing that happens a lot is home swapping, where people may leave their home for three months to go to Europe, and the person in Europe comes over for three months, stays in their home. I'm wondering if that has any effect on this, or is it outside of that?
Well, three, any three-month exchange would be not a short-term rental. But we have looked at home exchanges.
Oh, it could be a month, though.
Let's just say it's two. We've looked at the home exchanges in terms of their, are you asking about the monetary exchange, or whether that be considered...
Generally, in a home swap, there isn't money involved.
There isn't money involved, but there is a, an exchange of resources. I mean, that's basically a barter, which would still be, which would still fall into a taxable category. So we would look at that as a, you know, as being a short-term rental.
So here's the thing. Part of your charge is to help us sift through these things. I have not heard from the council that they want to prohibit home exchanges, but we're going to be looking at areas where we say exclusive of... going to be looking at areas where we say exclusive of vacation rentals are banned, maybe. Then next thing down from that would be home stays. Do we want to ban home stays in certain areas, too? And then even another level down from that would be home exchanges. So that'll be all part of the discussion. There are three different categories, and from the discussions we've heard, have three different levels of impacts. The ones that seem to be the most impactful are the ones where they have no active management on site and they have, you know, an investor that runs it purely as a vacation rental 24/7. Then you have people that live on their building, they're there to manage it, they have some pride of ownership, they have to live with their neighbors, who seem to have a little less impact. And then, you know, like I said, the home exchanges is pretty much like less of an impact because it's not that often and maybe not that regular, too. It doesn't happen every year continually. So those will be part of the discussion and we'll bring that to you. We'll be looking at, like Adam said, the different zones. There's, you know, the way I see it are three basic categories. The first category is single-family residential, and that would encompass very low residential, low residential, and medium-low residential. The second category would be medium-density residential, which is kind of your, that map that we showed a little bit earlier, which is, you know, more of an apartment atmosphere. The third category would be high-density residential, which has a, you know, real dense feeling. It's the pier bowl area, you know, which is the main focus of where these are concentrated. And also, we would probably look at the downtown mixed-use area, which surprisingly, the area that we probably think that would fit in the best is where there's at least concentration. So anyway, that would be, to me and my mind, we'll look at three different areas and how we want to deal with this particular issue, all three categories in each one of those areas.
Can I just address just something he said or I have a question about just what he said? The, are you proposing that we're dealing with each of these residential areas, density areas, in a materially different way? Like we allow it here, we don't allow it there, we do something else over here?
We could. Or you could cross-the-board ban it, across-the-board allow it. But I think that there's character differences between those three areas, clearly. So we're going to present it to you with those options in each three areas to give you, you know, the ability to consider them either differently or the same. It'll really, you know, that'll be part of the deliberation in how we decide to approach them are slightly different. If you look at the intent of the districts, they're slightly different. So that's the approach that we're going to move forward with.
Okay. I think, I understand there's different flavors and different densities. You know, there's going to be some specific concerns, but if we're protecting one area of town, we should be protecting the other areas in similar ways. So anyway, that's my perspective on it.
My view on this, and I'll get to the two over here, is having, and some of us worked on that general plan for like four years, is let's start from the general plan and just in land use, which we've worked on, and the zoning ordinance, and we work our way down.
Right.
To me, let's work from the top down. Let's solve the zoning issues, the land use issues, and then after that, this other thing will start falling in place. So to me, my suggestion to staff is, these maps are very telling. I even brought my centennial general plan, I've been reading it for the last couple of days. There's each, the North Beach area has a certain flavor to it. If you re-look at our general plan and then look at the consistency into the intent of the zoning ordinance in certain of these areas, like you say, Jim, the pier bowl has that tourist area, North Beach has a tourist hub thing there, but then there's this mix of residential. And if we follow the hooks that were put in that general plan and in the zoning ordinance, I think the land use is going to fall out, and I think that's got to be the first step.
Absolutely.
That's our business. That's what we've worked on for four years to make the stuff that we're working on now, and that's got to be number one. You know, we look at our general plan and our zoning ordinance and what is allowed, what is not allowed. And if you read every one of those things and every sentence that we argued over and cussed and discussed in those four years for those areas, it's very telling and things will start being clear to us. And so that's my, my big pitch to staff is a starting point. That's from home plate to first base, that's where we got to start.
And that's, we couldn't agree more. So we handed out the purpose and the intent from the general plan and the zoning ordinance. Number one on my list is to identify the appropriate zones for the use based on the purpose and intent. And it's really hashing out a purpose and intent of zones that we all can agree on. You know, like I said, you know, there are members of the public that have weighed in on this. What is the purpose of residential zones? You know, for some people, they've mentioned that, you know, San Clemente is a tourist destination, we've always been a vacation rental-friendly town, and therefore they should be allowed in all residential zones. Other people have spoken about how residential zones are for residences, and they talk about what does it mean to be a resident versus a lodging use. And so they build an argument for why these shouldn't be allowed in any land use zone or residential zone. So those, that's really, you know, a critical starting point is identifying a purpose, you know, the purpose and intent of these zones. And then, as Chair Brown said, it should, it would naturally fall into place what the city should do based on those purposes and intents identification. So, you know, staff can present options for how to, you know, look at each zone, but I'd rather have a discussion about, you know, maybe starting with residential low. You know, that's a, that's a pretty consistent discussion that has come up is the impact on single-family zones. And if, you know, I kind of want to throw that all out there.
Okay. Let me, there's two commissioners that haven't talked yet and they really, I think they want to chime in, and I'd give Mr. Crandall an opportunity, followed by Commissioner Wood.
Just one item that kind of dovetails into what Wayne said and Mal had indicated, there's still one other way if in fact these uses are deemed nonconforming and they require a registration and a permit to operate. And if they violate and have X number of complaints, they lose their registration. That in fact deems them no longer in operation.
Right.
So keep that on the list of.
That was addressed last night.
I know, there's four items that are ways that they could be.
Yeah, that's a good point. That applies to any business, of course, but that's an excellent point and will be noted.
That was addressed last night in the TOT ordinance that did, the portion of it that did pass is three formal complaints and you lose your license.
Yeah. There is, yeah, which is a complicated process, but there is one additional possibility and that's conveyance the property. The property's conveyed and it also loses its status.
Commissioner Wood.
To echo Chairman's comment on the reference documents, I actually looked at the general plan and I don't find the mission statement or vision, so I went back to the vision in the strategic plan. I think that's maybe something we ought to go back to look at if we don't find this stuff in the general plan. Because our general plan started right from the land use and it goes into specifics. Question to Adam, applicants goes to business department to get the permit or planning department?
Right now, the vacation rental permit is issued through the finance department. Most likely, that's where it's going to stay. There's now a little bit of review that the planning division will need to do, but ultimately that hasn't been fully identified.
I have a question, too, possibly for the Assistant City Attorney, and that is, is there a court case established process for someone that wants to invest in one of these homes? Is there a due diligence process that laid out that says, go talk to the city development and make sure the land use is zoned for what you want to do, then go to the business department? What is, is there a guidepost out there for someone that wants to make, you know, let's go spend, you know, $500,000 to $750,000 and buy a house and, you know, because I want another house in some neighborhood?
Yeah. Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I think there are probably two guideposts. The first is buyer beware, and the second might be buy low, sell high. Beyond that, not to be facetious, but it's on every buyer to do his due diligence or her due diligence, understand what the regulations are, and if they purchase a property that can't be used for the purposes intended, that's really on them. I'm not aware of any law. Of course, I'm not a real estate attorney, but I.
Could you pull that trap line for us between now and the study session?
Yeah, I certainly can.
Do you have a real estate attorney in your firm?
There are several.
Okay.
Yeah, I can, I can take a look at that. I think what we'll find is that the onus is on the buyer to be aware of what is out there, but I can take a look at that, for sure.
I mean, when I came to town and developed my house on Crystal, even though I inherited the property, the first place I went was to talk to Mr. Petch and his guys at the counter and say, okay, what can I do down here? And they got the book out, this is what you can do. So it seemed like a prudent way to start, but.
At the same time, we've seen instances here at the planning commission level where owners have purchased property, misunderstanding CCNRs, for example.
Definitely.
What's permitted and have found themselves with a.
Many a denial in this commission because, well, they listened to a real estate agent and then didn't go talk to the city.
And so your cause of action in that instance would lie with the real estate agent as opposed to the city, but that's typically how that, how that happens.
Okay. Mr. Wood, you have your light on?
Chairman.
If Commissioner.
Oh, you do.
I apologize. No, you have more, I apologize.
Well, you had some questions, so I can throw that to you. So in the zoning, a short-term renter was never recognized as a use because it's not listed. Now we're changing the name to short-term lodging unit. For that reason, a question to our city attorney is, is that permit considered a registration, business license, or a land use permit? And illegally, what are the differences between those different levels?
The current permit or that which is being proposed?
The current, the permits that has been handed out.
Not permits.
The current process, to my understanding, is a ministerial process akin to, say, a business permit. What is on the table potentially is adding a land use process, a land use permit, like a CUP in addition. Those have different standards. A ministerial permit like a business license, if each of the boxes are checked, each of the requirements are met, that has to be issued by the city. With a land use permit like a CUP, it's discretionary, which comes to the commission and based on findings like health, safety, and welfare compatibility, which in this instance are central. The commission can decide to or not to grant. But currently, as I understand it, and Adam could chime in as well, it's a ministerial process akin to a business license or business permit.
Okay. To continue on your comments of that, the due diligence and the people invest money on the property based on their understanding or even based on a permit they already received, does that give them, entitled them to continue that business?
It's a really good question.
If it's not a land use permit.
Yeah.
It's just a business license.
Sure. Mr. Chair, Commissioners, this question really gets to the core of Commissioner Agelston's question as well. And it really is a question of constitutional law, the Fifth Amendment and takings law. And that's a pretty complicated area of law with Supreme Court precedent. But the short answer is if the cities' changed regulations do not deprive a property owner of the ability to put their property to some economically viable use, then there's no claim against the city for a change in the permitted uses. So in this instance, if the city were to change the uses to which a residential property could be made and somebody purchased a property, say, five years ago with the intent of always renting it out for vacation rentals, and that was limited in some way, that would be a question under takings law. And the question is, would they still have some viable economic use? The answer here would be yes, depending on how far the commission and council went with the changed regulations.
Thank you. Okay. We have to provide the public an opportunity to speak here. We only have about 12, 13 minutes, so Jim, your light's been on the longest, and then we'll go back.
Okay.
Wrap up with Commissioner Agelston.
The, I think this is probably a question from Al. The fundamental characteristics of why we're doing these vacation rentals is that they're easy to do online, right? That the growth of that, the technology of it has reduced the friction of it. How are we, how would the city be in terms of legal standing if we had certain, if we added to our ordinance certain requirements that says, when you order this vacation rental online, we have to show certain things? Like you have to show what the TOT is? You have to show the rules and regulations that the city creates, so it's presented right there when the person registers. Are we on solid ground if we have ordinances that say you are violating our ordinance if the website you order on doesn't provide this kind of information to the people?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, that's not an issue that I've looked at particularly. My knee-jerk, my gut reaction would be that we would be on solid ground.
We would be on solid ground.
We would be. We have police powers to regulate land use, which is exactly what the commission and the council are reviewing right now. And those police powers, as interpreted by the California Supreme Court, are incredibly broad. That's something that we can take a look at and bring back at the next meeting of the commission. But again, my gut is that that's something that we could require a, you know, an owner who is renting their property to disclose to any prospective renter.
Okay. That would be done through the website, even though they don't own the website, you know, the owner doesn't own the website?
That's correct. It's akin to, if the commission were to grant a CUP to any kind of use, a convenience store, the commission is entitled to attach to that approval any number of conditions, as long as they have some kind of connection, some kind of nexus to what's being approved. And really, under case law, the sky's the limit for what can be imposed. Again, as long as there's that nexus or connection here, as long as what's being required of those who are renting their properties out isn't arbitrary and not connected to the city's police powers over land use, it would likely be permissible. We have to look at specifics, but again, it's likely permissible.
Okay, good. If you could look into that, I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Agelston.
It's my understanding that several of these vacation rental websites, such as Airbnb, actually say in their website, check with the city to see if it's legal or not, period. And I wanted to clear up something, Mal, because I'm confused about this. When someone comes in here to the finance department right now, is it not just a registration? It's not an administrative type of thing where they have, that we review something and it's not a permit because we don't, we don't review and say, yes, this is correct, that's correct, and so forth? So is it either a registration, it was administrative, or is it a permit?
It's a good question. I don't, I don't process these applications. Maybe, Adam, you can address the specifics of how that's processed?
Yes. Commissioner Agelston, it is a registration. Really, you're registering to have the ability to pay TOT.
Okay. So if it's a registration and it's not a formal permitting process, does that put us on a better legal ground?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, if the code has been violated in any way, then we're in the same position as far as revocation of the ability to engage in that use would go. So whether there was a business license or they're simply registering their property to pay TOT, if they violate, then we can go in and revoke in the same, in the same manner. I'm not sure if it puts us in a better position. A violation is a violation, it's prosecuted essentially the same way.
The reason I ask is because many here in the city receive postcards saying it was a permitted, and I'm questioning that word permitted, because if it was, if they just came in and registered, that's not really a permit.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with the postcards or with that process, so I can't, I can't speak to that.
The card said, everybody, I think it was stated by the city manager last night, they mailed a 12,000, 500 cards out to.
I can look into that.
All right, within 300 feet of a.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll look into that.
Adams, we'll wrap this up quick then. You wanted to put residential low into play, you said, so to speak, or some sort.
Ultimately, the question is what.
I would come right back at you and say residential very low, residential low, and low medium are in play.
Huh?
Yeah.
By density?
By density. It is, I don't know what the concurrence of the rest of the commission is on that, but if you want feedback, that's my feedback. And with that, Christopher Blackwell, last question, so we can get to...
What do you mean, like in play?
Well, he wanted feedback of whether it's, do you want staff to go back and really look at it?
Yeah, sure.
And I went, "Yeah, go back and look." And I think some of the people agree with that.
I think we have lots of information to really absorb here, and we're going to have a few meetings on this, so I can tell we're all going to have some really, we're going to have some great conversation on this. But I just have a quick question for legal. If you would, if you have it handy, can you read to us what a legal definition of hotel is? Would you, is that handy? If not, I've got something here I can read.
It's in 17.4.
No, just out loud in the record, if you have it handy.
You know, I have the code in front of me, I don't have it handy, so if you have it right there, or you can guide me to the portion of the code that...
I guess I was looking for non-city language, just generally, like per Webster. And let me just read what another Southern California city has considered as a definition for hotel. Is a building, group of buildings, or a portion of a building which is designed for or occupied as the temporary abiding place of individuals for less than 30 consecutive days, including but not limited to establishments held as bed and breakfast ends, hostels, inns, motels, motor lodges, timeshare projects, tourist courts, and other similar uses. Is that consistent with what the City of San Clemente intends in our definition of hotels?
This is the updated code.
And if this is going to be a lengthy, we can revisit this next meeting.
This is probably a longer conversation for next meeting.
Yeah, so why don't we do that, but it's something for the commission to just to think about.
Good words.
Yeah.
With that, I'll have to open a public testimony here to get, we have about five minutes, and we have one speaker card tonight, Aaron Clark. And so please, you have three minutes to tell us what you think.
Thank you, sir. My name's Aaron Clark. I appreciate you taking my, I know you're exhausting, you've heard from a lot of people. I actually watched online the January 20th deliberation you had, a special session. I bought a home, I'm a Marine Corps veteran, bought a home through a VA loan in a very nice area of the city on Collier, Toledo, and a neighbor of mine came down and basically told you all some misrepresentations of how I'm using my house. She mentioned that there was a solicitation or an advertisement for me to rent my house out to groups of up to 25 people, you may recall. She also mentioned that I was advertising for folks who might want my house for parties, bachelorette parties, bat mitzvahs, weddings. Nothing could be further from the truth. I have a license to do short-term rentals. I have not used the license, license or permit, I think there was a discussion about that. I intend to do so in a responsible manner. I have a family of three boys who love to surf. I live in Los Angeles, that's where I'm tied. I'd rather live here. I can't right now, I intend to move down here. I'm going to use this house, I've used the house. I think there's a lot of heart, I've watched all the deliberations, by the way, from the city council. I've read all the reports. By the way, the definition of hotel is, hotel means any structure, any portion of any structure containing six or more short-term lodging units pursuant to your ordinance. What I'm trying to say here is, I think, from what I've seen, and I know there's a lot of discussions yet to be had, the reality is there's some hyperbole and there's some maybe fear mongering that's happening, because I've seen it on my own account. I did due diligence, I'm in land use, asked realtors, asked folks in the business, told everything was clear, told it was all about sober living houses, you're fine, went to the city. This was November of last year. And so who I have in my house now is a cardiologist from South about College and his wife, who are 65, who lost their house in the fire. They're there for three or four months, I was happy to be able to put them up. I have three rambunctious boys. I can guarantee you they would cause my neighbors way more problems than these folks. It's all to suggest that I hope that the commission and the council takes a very thoughtful and measured approach. I'm concerned about the timeline they've given you to respond. It's like if I have a hangnail, I don't want to cut off my thumb, I want to fix the hangnail. And I think there's ways, and Councilwoman Donchak, I believe is her name, was kind of eloquent in describing this, even in R1 zones, which I know are probably going to become the issue. I think this amortization clause is very important for folks who have been relying on these rentals. And from what I can gather, there's a few bad apples. And I'm down here because I'm a Marine that was basically disparaged in front of the community and your council without being able to defend myself. And what I'm saying is, I've never rented my home for short-term purposes, you know. And to close, I can tell you what I have on my rental solicitation. Please note, if you're looking for a party location, our home is not the place for you. We take seriously our neighbors' right to peaceful enjoyment of their homes and require all who occupy our home to be respectful of our property and our neighbors. Bachelor, bachelorette, wedding, and other party groups are prohibited. So for the record, I just wanted to put it on there for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, with that...
We have one more.
Oh, 11th hour, okay.
Hi, I'm Tricia Manning, and I just have a few things to say. First, when you were talking about the four categories that things can be in, or three categories, you had said something about legal non-conforming. I think we're completely forgetting about illegal non-conforming. It's my, in doing my research, I found that vacation rentals that are currently existing in R1 low-density areas are illegal. They are not a permitted use in San Clemente's zone, a permitted use is in R1 territory. And when these people applied, I've got a copy for you to look at here. It's a registration. You simply fill in your name, there's no discretion given at all, no review, no anything. You fill it in, you get it, and there's done. So I'll say that our zoning ordinance is a permitted ordinance, and you have to find, in order to be permitted, you have to find that it's permitted, which means it has to be a stated use. And if it's not stated in that table that we have for that area, it's excluded unless you find that it's similar to something that is permitted. There's only one other kind that's permitted in San Clemente right now, and that's bed and baths, that's a lodging unit also. But with bed and baths, our zoning code specifically prohibits them west of the 5 freeway. So they have protected in R1 on this side of the freeway. So people who have opened vacation rentals in this area have done it in violation of the zoning ordinance. So I don't think there's any worry about having to grandfather them in, because you don't, they're an illegal use already. You don't get to say, "Okay, now you're going to get to continue your illegal use." So I'd just like to make that point. And the gentleman that spoke earlier, he was talking about the people were here for three or four months, and they're fine. But we're not talking about people who are here for three or four months. We're talking about people who are here for three or four days. And I know that when I bought my home, the reason I bought it, it was because it was in a single-family residential neighborhood, and I was going to have neighbors. And these people, they watched out for each other. We have the watch committee in our area, where you know who's coming, belongs on your street, you know what cars belong there. When you have a vacation rental, suddenly, it's a continuing, it affects the stability of the area, which the California courts have come down and said that the ability, the character, keeping the character of the neighborhood and the stability of the neighborhood overrides any economic loss that the party that opens a vacation rental might have, because he can still rent his property, just not for shorter than 30 days. And when you're doing a balancing test, the city's rationale for putting this in the code outweighs the economic loss that he may lose, and we don't even know he's going to lose. So that's all I'd like to say, is that people in single-family residential neighborhoods, according to the code, they have something that they would appreciate being enforced. Thank you.
And for the record, your name again is?
I'm Tricia Manning.
Okay, thank you.
With that, I'd like to close the study session. We'll take about a five-minute break, be here and about, back here about 5 after, and we'll commence with a regular meeting.[1176.58]
Planning Commission meeting for the regular meeting of the Planning Commission of Wednesday, February 3rd, 2016. And with that, I will lead the Pledge of Allegiance. Everybody please stand and pledge allegiance to our country and our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'll pitch us the roll call, please.
Commissioner Eggleston.
Here.
Mr. Blackwell.
Here.
Commissioner Ruland.
Here.
Chair Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Crandall.
Here.
Commissioner Wu.
Yeah.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
We have no special orders of business tonight. Item five on our agenda is the minutes from the preceding meetings. And are there any comments or a motion to approve the minutes of the study session of January 20th, 2016?
I'll move we approve the study session minutes of January 20th.
I have a motion to approve. We'll have a second. I have a second from Mr. Blackwell. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? None? Passes seven zero. Minutes from the Planning Commission meeting, the regular meeting of 20 January. Are there any comments on that issue?
I do.
Okay.
On page five, in the middle of the page, it says Commissioner Wu stated for the record, I'd like to make the change to that paragraph. After 25 years grace period, earth, after the word earth, say he supports the science use beyond 25 years, then continue to be, it also limits the city.
Did you get that, Eileen? Just ripped the page.
I read this way. Thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll entertain a motion to approve with Commissioner Wu's changes.
I move we approve the minutes with Commissioner Wu's changes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Eggleston. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay, passes seven zero. All in written communication, members of the audience may address the commission on matters of public interest which pertain to the city and are not otherwise on this agenda. If you wish to speak, please step forward to the microphone, state your name and city of residence, and make a presentation. And you will, please limit your presentation to three minutes. We have three cards, starting with Jacqueline Blink? Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's an interesting name. Thank you for hearing me. I apologize. I looked at your site after getting the little postcard, and I'm new. I moved here in January, full time in April. Bought a house in the Pier Bowl on Monterey. Love it. I carefully chose San Clemente. Of many towns that I could go to, moving from Arizona, Priyata, and Colorado. I picked the town because it felt like a mountain town where I raised my children, but near the ocean. When I got the card, I was amazed because there's renters on both sides of my house that I own, as well as across the street and behind me. I'm thinking, I thought everything was bought and up around here that could be rented out. So when I found out that there's others that could be a vacation home, I called your city and talked to a very helpful woman. She helped me with the website on the drop-down to see what other houses could be up as a vacation home. I was mortified to see that my own house was listed. The previous owner had it listed, it was not disclosed to me, as a rental home, a vacation home. So she took me off that list. What I'm saying to you is you've got a gorgeous town here. It's a beautiful Rockwell-Norman town. If you continue to exploit it with all these renters' units and vacation homes, it's going to be a Vegas, and I'm going to be out of here. I own it, free and clear. I have no problem selling it. But if it's going to be continually exploited and made into a neon sign up and down for rent, you're going to lose that good feeling. So please, consider carefully what kind of people you want to live here, what kind of people you want to be going up and down the streets, what kind of people you want to draw here to work in your communities, like myself. Thank you.
Thank you, Jacqueline. Welcome to San Clemente. Thank you for coming forward.
Thank you.
Charlene Berens.
Hi, good evening. Thank you so much for hearing me. I didn't understand the procedure either. I've not been through this process before. I understand what you're saying. I appreciate that. My husband and I have traveled in many different cities, many different countries, and used VRBO ourselves, and have had beautiful experiences. And we typically go for a week at a time. We were just recently in Italy, in Tuscany, and I wouldn't have had the experience I had had vacation rental not been an option to me. So, we live on Barcelona. It's in the R1 area. We were actually considering using our home on occasion as a vacation rental if we're going to go to somewhere else and have somebody come and stay at our home. I think last night, I was at the meeting last night, and we don't have a permit, and I was like, oh my gosh, maybe we've lost our opportunity to do this. The 90-day rule of maximum days of 90 days in a year would be fine for us because we want to do it on occasion. And the thing that they said last night at the meeting is there should be rules, there should be regulations that should be followed, and if they're not followed, then the three strikes and you're out. And I think that there are definitely some bad apples that are spoiling the bunch for many people. And I'm just speaking as someone who's enjoyed vacation rentals. I would hate to not be able to have somebody come to our city and enjoy it and the possibility of coming full-time someday. I don't know. So I just wanted to put that out there that I'm a user of a vacation rental, vacation idea, and I really love that opportunity. And I just think it would be sad that we wouldn't be able to have that here. Just put the rules in place to make it work, and be respectful, and have the owners of the homes be responsible. And if they're not responsible, then they'd lose their permit. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Sam Graffney?
How are you doing, council members? My wife and I, we live on Avenida Cordova. We got it posted like everybody else. We have a concern with a baby coming, dark streets. Vacation renters, drink, party, do all those shenanigans. That's why everyone's a little worried about it. So the bottom line is, if you let someone move in in a week, and they're drinking and going to bars and doing whatever they're doing on their vacation, and they cause havoc in a neighborhood, then what? Is it law enforcement problem, or is it a land problem? I don't want to live next to a hotel. I drive 160 miles a day to go to LA to work to come home. And when I get off my street and I see the sun coming down, it's like I'm home. I don't want to come to a community that now is going to be festered with who knows where, who knows what, who knows what they're up to. That's what worries us. That's what worries me. That's what worries her. We're just talking to you as a couple that sees this going on, and we're just baffled why all these dots that are being shown on this map are just going to grow and grow and grow. And we're going to lose the sense of community, the sense of family that we love. That's what we live here for. That's what we pay so much to live here. That's what I wanted to ask for you guys to consider when you're doing all of this. Think about the families that are living here, and what are these vacation homes going to add value to this neighborhood? How could they? Good?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Unfortunately, southwest, yeah, we have telephone poles, so you get one street light per block. It's kind of a shame that we can't get undergrounding and accelerated, and I share that concern. Okay, with that, we'll move on with no other speaker cards, and there's no items on our consent calendar. We'll go into the public hearing items, item 8A, 606 Camino de los Mars, conditional use permit 1535, 76 station beer and wine, with Mr. Jones.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Cliff Jones, a project planner. The request before you this evening is for the 76 station to allow beer and wine. The subject site is at 606 Camino de los Mars. You can see the existing fuel station in the bottom left-hand corner on the screen. On the right-hand side, you can see the surrounding land uses. Across the street is residential. That red line that you see up on the screen, that actually delineates the Dana Point residences. And then to the right of that is residents of San Clemente. To the right of the fueling station, when looking at this image, you can see the shopping center that Stater Brothers is located in, and then uses to the left is actually the freeway. Little more information about the site. The property is 100 feet of the closest residential uses, and the property is 222 feet of Stater Brothers, which is the closest use that sells alcohol. As I've mentioned, the applicant is requesting the concurrent sale of beer and wine along with motor vehicle fuel sale. There are no exterior modifications proposed as part of this project. There are minimum standards of the zoning ordinance to allow for these type of establishments to sell beer and wine. This project does not meet two of those standards. The first standard is that the establishment shall not be located within 100 feet of residentially zoned property. The project does not comply with this code requirement because the closest residence is located 100 feet of the site across Camino de los Mars. The second standard that the project does not meet is that the establishment is required to be located, or shall not have, a site within 300 feet that sells alcoholic beverages for off-site consumption. And in this case, we have the Stater Brothers, which is located 222 feet away. So the project doesn't meet the required findings for the conditional use permit, doesn't meet the minimum standards, and therefore, we cannot approve this project. So staff is recommending that the Planning Commission deny the application, and that concludes staff's presentation. Staff and the applicant are available to respond to any questions or comments that you may have.
Mr. Ruland, you have a question, staff?
Yeah, I'm just wondering if, since the property, it's 100 feet away, but it's legally in a different city, what kind of difference does that make in our ordinance? The fact that it's in a different city, does that disqualify it, or just any residence regardless? Okay, thanks.
Answer?
Yeah, the fact that it's Dana Point residence does not change really the legality or the reasoning for the ordinance. The ordinance is there to protect the residents that are nearby, whether it be in Dana Point or San Clemente.
Mr. Blackwell?
Yes, yes, yes. Okay, so to the east of this property, first building you see that abuts, goes right up to Camino de los Mars, right there, at one point recently was a liquor store. Can you tell me if that liquor store was, if the development standard was different when that liquor store was permitted?
Yes, the standards for liquor stores are different than the standards for fuel stations that sell alcohol.
Also?
So the standards for fuel stations that sell alcohol, they have those two standards and the other standards that are outlined in the staff report. Those two standards being the 100-foot distance for residential, and then 300 feet for another establishment that sells alcohol for off-site consumption. So that applies to establishment that sell fuel and alcohol. For a standalone liquor store, they have the conditional use permit required findings, but they don't have those minimum separation requirements.
Okay, thank you.
At this time, any other questions of staff? Would the applicant now like to make a presentation?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Planning Commission, and thank you for, Cliff Jones, for processing this in a very clear manner. We don't dispute the facts of the case. We don't dispute that we don't meet certain parts of the requirements of the code. There's, I had prepared an attachment for, which I believe is in your packet, I'm not going to go through every single detail, I'm just going to make some four broad points. One, which was already brought up, is more intensive alcohol outlets are not subject to the same requirements as those that sell beer and wine. And if they were to be held to the same standards, I did a survey of all of the alcohol outlets in your city. There are 37. 11 out of those 37 would meet the distance requirements set for gas stations. Secondly, we went and did a survey of the gas stations in the city. By my count, there are 13. One of those gas stations in your city meets those requirements, only one. There is one that has, that might be able to meet those requirements, but it is within, the nearest commercial building to them is a vacant building which may or may not have alcohol in the future. And I'm glad this slide is up. The third thing we did is we looked at the neighboring city's alcohol regulations. And the point has been made in the discussion today that across the street, across Camino de los Mars, is Dana Point. Dana Point doesn't have distance requirements, prohibitions on alcohol sales. So, San Clemente is in a position of enforcing a rule for Dana Point residences that Dana Point doesn't enforce. So, we're asking for some, so for some consideration of allowing of a variance, or of a consideration of some leniency in the ordinance. And given the practicalities of this case, it's in a far corner of the city boundary, it's within a commercial shopping center, and so we're asking for some leniency.
Okay, Mr. Blackwell?
I just wanted to comment your statement about the separation from residential uses, even though that residential use may be in another jurisdiction. Really, the intent is to separate a particular use from a more sensitive use, regardless of the jurisdiction. I mean, that's irrelevant. It's the people that we're concerned about, regardless of the city they live in.
I understand that. I would point out two things. One, Dana Point doesn't have those same regulations, so ask for a little bit of consideration with that. And in this particular case, the distance requirement is 100 feet, but that's six and a half lanes of traffic, with no direct connection to the shopping center for pedestrian use.
I have a question. In our staff briefing here, we have Dana Point alcohol regulations, chapter 9.07040, which states here 100 feet from any areas owned or used for residential purposes. So they have the same ordinance that we have.
But they require a conditional use permit, but there's no prohibition?
So... Also, San Juan, they don't have, they don't call it out on their code, but they refer to the California Business Professional Code requirements of 100 feet from a resident.
They require a conditional use permit?
And so...
But there's no prohibition?
100 feet's kind of a standard.
Sure.
From a resident. And as I looked at some of the other cities, seems to be kind of a standard.
I would contend that that 100 feet is a requirement of a conditional use permit, but not a requirement for prohibition.
Well, certainly in a CUP like tonight or some other thing, it can be granted or denied based on what those particular planning commission's
Sure.
findings are made. So, anyway, there seems to be a standard here, is what the point I'm trying to make, amongst all three cities here locally. Okay. Any other questions of the applicant? Okay, thank you. That will, hey, open the public hearing. And is Keith Gardner, is that you?
Yeah, that was.
Okay, okay, fine. Is there anybody else that wants to talk on this, as far as a public hearing on this issue of this gas station? I'll close the public hearing and invite comments. Mr. Blackwell?
I'm sorry, I do have a question for you, Cliff. The question I have is, all of the properties that were mentioned by the applicant as being within that proximity, are you aware of how many of those actually have a license to sell beer and wine? Not a license, but a permit from the city of San Clemente to sell beer and wine?
No, I do not know that.
We know of any that do?
According to the applicant, the location at the 60, I'm sorry, no, the... So the only location, according to the applicant, and I have not confirmed this with alcoholic beverage control, is the 901 Avenida Pico location. It's a mobile station, and they do sell beer and wine.
They're within 100 feet of a residence or residential zone?
No.
That's what I'm looking for. So we are not aware of any gas stations that are permitted to sell beer and wine within 100 feet of residential zone in the city of San Clemente?
That's correct.
None exist? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Wu?
Yes. First, I'd like to compliment the applicant. He did a lot of work and a great effort on your application materials. Unfortunately, I cannot support this one. The reason, there are multiple reasons. You made a few statements, almost every point I would disagree. The gas station, the city does not prohibit a gas station. The fact that you are here is for a conditional use permit process, and if you meet a certain criteria, you would be able to get one. And on your survey about gas stations selling concurrently alcoholic beverage, there are actually two as of today, and you also recognized that in one of the cases, it's not sure whether in the future... in the future it will be occupied, but we're looking at the today's condition, there are two. Then, the planning staff already pointed out that whether the opposite, the property across the street is, belongs to a different city is irrelevant here. And also, the condition is, the term is "or," if you are 100 feet away from residential, or you are 300 feet away from another store, then you cannot get it. So it's not a "both," it's not an "and," so as long as you, you meet one of those two conditions, or three, and then you cannot get it by code. Then, even if we measure your gas station to the State Brothers, and I actually measured it on the Google, Google satellite image, it's, it's, it's close to 300, it's still within 300, from, not from the minimart, but from the gas station to the corner of the State Brother, it's within, it's about a 280 walking distance. So for all this reason, I recognize you made a great effort, but I cannot support your application. Thank you.
Mr. Grantl?
Yeah, I think we're here to enforce the laws that applies today, and I don't see any need for exception, so I will make a motion if no one else has any comments they want to make prior to that.
Yes, the only, Mr. Erickson, I think is...
Yeah, the comment that I would like to make is right, we are a zoning and land use body, we have to go by the rules and regulations, and I'm, I'm not in a position to make a, an exception, so.
I 100% agree, so I move on resolution PC 16004, resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of San Clemente, California, denying conditional use permit 15305, 76 Station Beer and Wine, a request to consider allowing the sale of beer and wine at the 76 Station located at 606 Camino de los Maris.
Have a motion and a second.
Second.
Mr. Erickson, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Pass of 7-0. Okay, with that, we'll proceed on to item 8B, Avenue, 907 Avenue de Pico, amendment to site plan permit 99-162, amendment to concept plan 9423, site plan permit 15-18, architectural permit 15-17, tentative parcel map 2014-126, Chase Bank. And with that, none other than Mr. John Chaff, congratulations last night on getting your land use plan.
Thank you very much, thank you very much. Feels like deja vu being back here tonight. Yeah, I did, I had to.
Two or three, two years or so in the making, yeah.
So before you is a proposal for a Chase Bank. The project's located at 907 Avenue de Pico, within the Lowe's Home Improvement Parcel. It's located at the southeast corner of the lot, within the Plaza Pacifica Center, and is within the Rancho San Clemente specific plan. Just to give you a little background on the property, in 1994, the concept plan for Plaza Pacifica was approved. In 2000, the Lowe's development was approved, and then later in 2008, additional conditions of approval were added to the Lowe's site to deal with noise that was being created by early morning delivery vehicles. Summary of the project before you today is a subdivision of the Lowe's parcel, to create two parcels, essentially one for Lowe's and one's for the new Chase Bank, develop a Spanish building with a drive-through and covered canopy, relocate the early morning staging area, amend the concept plan's parking standards to be consistent with the zoning ordinance parking standards, and then just to note that the project will be required if recommended approval by the Planning Commission this evening to go to the City Council for approval because of the requested subdivision. The site plan is, as I said, located in the southeast corner of the Lowe's parcel. The building is located in the back corner of that, the applicant is also proposing a two-lane drive-through underneath the covered canopy. The project does not require a conditional use permit in this specific plan area, however the drive-through and circulation through the site was evaluated by our engineering division to ensure that it was safe and did not create any hazardous safety issues. To deal with one of the concerns from the Design Review Subcommittee in reviewing the application, stop, stop signs or stop bars were added to the end of the drive aisles as you enter into the site from, from the Lowe's direction heading east, to address some concerns from the planning, or the Design Review Subcommittee. The architecture was reviewed by staff and the Design Review Subcommittee, it did go forward to two Design Review Subcommittee meetings to address issues associated with the architecture. And the, the proposed design before you tonight does incorporate all of the recommended modifications. A lot of the discussion was on the drive-through canopy, whether it should be attached or whether it should be detached. There was a couple of meetings on that, and it was decided that the applicant look at both options and see what was proportionally and most complimentary to the building, and so the canopy has been detached with a pitched roof and stout columns to provide some accurate proportions to the structure. Parking is one of the key components of this project in that they are proposing, the applicant is proposing an amendment to the concept plan parking standard, which is one parking space for 215 square feet for the enclosed building area. Our zoning ordinance requires one space per 300 square feet, so it is a significant difference between the two. So with the concept plan, 599 parking spaces would be required. As part of this project, it would result in a reduction of the available Lowe's parking of 105 parking spaces, which would still be adequately provided in that if the project were to be approved, 553 parking spaces would be provided, which is above and beyond the 439 parking spaces that would be required per the zoning ordinance. That also includes the parking evaluation for the garden center, which is one space per 100, or one space per 800 square feet of the garden, outdoor garden area. Staff also evaluated the potential impacts to parking associated with the Christmas Tree Lots that they do annually. Staff evaluated those proposals in past years, and they occupied 48 parking spaces. So with the proposal and the reduction in the parking spaces, there would still be a surplus of parking spaces provided, as well as additional spaces for customers of the Christmas Tree Lots. And the Chase Bank is providing almost three times the required parking for the site. So, and then just to provide some reassurance and further analysis of the reduction in the parking standard, a survey was completed this summer, over the course of, I believe, about five days, and it was evaluated, and as a result, only 25% of the parking spaces were occupied, so staff does feel that while still being in compliance with the zoning ordinance and the survey, there will be adequate parking provided on site. Landscaping will be incorporated into this project. One of the concerns related to discussions of the Design Review Subcommittee was related to the coral tree that's located at the southeast corner of the site. On the right-hand plan, it shows the utility lines that will be going through there, as well as the tree location. As you see, the blue line does cut through, which is one of the utilities, I think it's the sewer easement line that will be relocated. So the tree was evaluated by an arborist and also our city's landscape architect to determine whether it could be maintained in place, or if that wasn't possible, if it would be possible to preserve it and box it and relocate it on site. So both the arborist and the city's landscape architect agreed that the tree would be able to be boxed, these types of trees can be relocated, and they did feel that that was The relocation of the proposed early morning staging area, this is for staging after 7:00 a.m. In red is the existing location, the proposed location is in blue, so it would be adjusted one drive aisle to the north. Staff believes that this locate, this relocation is negligible and shouldn't create any negative impacts to the adjacent property owners, and all of the conditions of approval that were applied to the project in 2008 will still apply to the Lowe's site. Those have been carried over to this project just for repetitiveness, just to ensure that it's never, you know, missed, so it will both be applied, or the 2008 approval will apply, and they've been carried over into this approval as well. So staff believes that the project can meet the required findings, in that the project meets the parking requirements, as well as other specific plan development standards. The architecture is consistent with the design guidelines and other structures within the Plaza Pacifica development. The drive-through and site circulation are safe and have been reviewed by our engineering division, and the relocation of the early morning staging area should not create any negative impacts to the adjacent residential uses. So that concludes staff's presentation, staff and the applicant are available for any questions you may have.
Any questions of staff? Mr. Blackwell?
Yes. Great presentation, John, thank you.
Thank you.
It's been a nice project. Just, I just need some clarification, if we can, if you have an exhibit that, that kind of zooms in on the ingress egress for the drive-through, can we take a look at that again? And I'd like to know how that relates to the primary drive aisle?
Let me see if we can, there we go.
Hey, it worked.
Okay, okay, so if we zoom out, I see the site plan, but how does the ingress egress work? I mean, how are we anticipating that folks are going to access that drive aisle? Are they going to come from the, from the north, are they going to come from the other side?
I think the way that it's been designed is that it could be accessed from either the east or the west, whether it's coming through down the drive aisle from the Lowe's site, or coming in off of the main access road, making two lefts to enter into the site. So that was something that the Design Review Subcommittee and staff looked at, we had their engineer look at it again to make sure that it wasn't going to create any circulation issues, as well as a second review by our city's traffic engineer to ensure that there weren't going to be any circulation issues. So staff feels confident that there shouldn't be any, any...
Issues.
Issues, and, you know, it's a bank drive-through, I don't think that there are very many long queues that, that would be expected. There is a Bank of America on the Plaza Pacifica site that they do have a drive-through as well, and I'm not aware of any issues associated with that either, so.
Well, that in fact is why I'm asking, because you're right, usually there's not, I drive through there occasionally, and occasionally you have a little bit of a backup, it's kind of a tight turn when you come off the street, and folks taking their time in there, it can back up a little bit. But with this one, you mentioned the Christmas Tree Lot, and that's really what got me thinking about it. That entire, I guess it'd be the western portion down by the, where the Christmas Tree Lot is every year, that would restrict access from that direction, so folks would be, I guess, forced to go all the way around and through the parking lot, or to the north and through, and I just wanted to know if we're going to have any signage or any sort of guiding measures to get folks in, so there's no confusion, backed up cars, et cetera. Folks are going at speeds on that drive aisle here. I don't know if that's, is that a street? That's not a public...
This is, that's like the, the access road.
Right.
We've got the Lowe's, and then there's the tire shop and the IHOP that are there.
And the difference between that location and the Bank of America is there's, there's a stop sign. So folks are already conditioned to slow down and prepare for a turn or for a stop, and unless there's a stop sign there, I just wanted to make sure that there is no danger there, folks, you know, using that, that access point, say during Christmas time, you know, holidays when the trees are out. So what are we doing to get folks to that drive-through? Are we, are we guiding them there? Are we just going to build it and have this little driveway, and they're going to have to find their way in somehow through the sea of parking spots?
Well, if you look at the site plan, the drive aisle, the third drive aisle up, kind of at the upper right-hand corner, that is a drive aisle that will also access all the way through. So, I mean, I think that there's adequate access through there, the engineering division did look, did look at this. So I mean, I, I think that there shouldn't be any issues associated with that, but I don't know if the applicant would like to speak to, to that as well.
We've had our, our traffic engineer look at it, the applicant's engineers looked at it, we feel comfortable with it, it just struck me as kind of a strange layout, only because it doesn't have direct access off of that drive aisle. And did we look at possibly doing that, changing the configuration of the access point, or was that even possible?
We talked about it in Design Review, we can probably get into that during discussions.
Okay, great, thank you.
Is it, just so I, for my own self, right here, this is an access road as well.
Correct.
So it does have direct access off of an access road.
Right. Mm-hmm. You had by the, interesting to it. Commissioner Smith, you have a question of staff?
Yeah, I have a question about the site plan. Can you blow that up a little bit more?
Yes.
And shift it over a little?
Second?
A little more. There are three parking bays to the left that are parking bays, part of that is the Christmas Tree thing, but those are essentially parking bays for Lowe's, busy parking bays. And I see that each one of those parking bays, for whatever reason, connects directly into the site of the bank. I'd like to know what's behind that thinking?
The, the connection?
Yeah.
Well, they go through the site, all the way through now, and so this, this was the location that was selected. I think that there are other sites that do have drive-through alley bays that do come through, in close to the same configuration that you have. A number of these island sites that are located separate from the main big box retailers, you've got El Pollo Loco, Carl's Jr., and Taco Bell, and I think that this location is just as good as any of those other locations in terms of dealing with those circulation issues, given its location is not near one of the main street light locations where vehicles are accessing, accessing in off of Pico, like you do have with the Taco Bell and the, and I think the site's probably pretty similar to the configuration of the Carl's Jr. site, that does also intersect with a drive aisle through the, I'm not sure what the retailer is at the end there, but...
Michael.
It is a similar configuration.
It seems to me to be dangerous. Also seems to me to be somewhat confrontational by somebody who could cut into that line because there's no specific queuing. And for that reason, I don't understand why those three parking bays just don't terminate so that the site can be more on its own and be more of a divine, defined drive-through, which is really important. When you have drive-throughs, you want to be able to get into a queue and see that and carry it through, whereas this is, to me, very disjointed. So I don't see, I don't see any advantages in bringing those parking bays through into the site, or other disadvantages.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Rockson?
Yes, okay. I think this is, thank, thank you, Jim, for explaining that other access point, it makes sense. This design, the way it's laid out, using that access road creates sort of a cylinder, sort of a round circulation pattern, doesn't it? You see, you, you turn in, you come around, it's just kind of a natural flow. And to address Commissioner Smith's concern, that end spot as you're going through the drive-through, the portico, that third spot could have a van in it which could potentially obstruct line of sight. So from a safety perspective, it might make sense to at least have, maybe there's a, is there a stop sign there?
We probably say this for a discussion more...
Stop signs for... Stop signs for all three locations.
Rather than...
You're right, you're right, yeah.
Question of staff, please?
Yeah, so my question is, is there a stop sign there?
There are stop signs for all three locations at the end of the drive aisle, and that was one of the solutions to improve the circulation.
That's great, okay, thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Would the applicant might come forward and make a presentation?
My name is Bob Supernong with Stan Tech Architecture, representing Chase tonight. You know, we've read through the staff report, and we appreciate all of the hard work that was put into it by staff and working with us to be able to develop this project. We feel we have a great project in front of you tonight. We've read through the conditions, and we are here to accept the conditions and, and the project as, as it stands. To elaborate a little bit on the circulation issue, we did look at that and looked at how that would function. You know, first of all, the queuing that happens for a ATM drive-through does not get a tremendous amount of stacking. There may be one to two vehicles at most that's going to be queued up. We have actually enough length on that drive for five vehicles in each lane. We don't think we'll ever have that kind of stacking. People just don't, they're not accustomed to using a facility like that. So, we don't feel there'll be a conflict of vehicles trying to utilize that drive-through function. As, as John mentioned, we did add the stop signs at the end of those drive aisles to help, you know, to be able to control that traffic. And, you know, I think by closing those up, I think it might create more circulation issues for the center. You know, right now, people are used to being able to go down those drive aisles and exit through to the main access to be able to leave the center, and I think that this still allows some of that circulation through our site as well, and I think that would be an improvement to, to have that that way. I've got representatives from Chase and from Lowe's and from the property owner here tonight for any questions that you guys may have as well. Thank you.
Mr. Eggersen, do you have a question?
What is the current status of the coral tree?
We had a, an arborist go out and take a look at that, to see if it could, if it was a healthy enough specimen to be able to box up and relocate, and they felt that that it was. Based on all of the utility relocation that we have going on, the infrastructure for the, for the proposed building, we don't feel that, that tree would survive with that work that's going to happen there. So, our intent is to, to relocate that tree, to preserve it and to relocate it on the site.
Whereabouts on the site?
It's in the planter just to the, let's see, which way is my north? To the north of the drive aisle up on the upper right-hand corner of that site, in that landscape area, is where it's proposed. Our landscape plan indicates that.
Uh huh. And the likelihood of it surviving in that location is?
The arborist felt that it was a good, you know, specimen to be able to relocate. He's given a specific instruction on how to box that up and relocate it, and then I believe then the conditions that if something should happen to that, we will replace it with a 48, 48-inch box as well.
How tall is a 48-inch box?
That's a good question. We have four feet of root box, we don't know how tall the 12... Yeah, I don't think is, probably as large as what's in there today.
Uh huh.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions of the, of the applicant or the other applicants, partners in this particular endeavor at all, Lowe's or whatever? Mr. Wu?
Yeah, question about the parking. Do you see, I know you're, you're overparked by about triple what our minimum standards are. Did, did you have a particular reason for that? Did you feel that there was going, going to be a need for that much parking, or did it just work out that way in the site plan?
Typically, when we lay out the properties for Chase, we do like to exceed the parking requirements. It's a better comfort level for our customers and employees to have plenty of parking so that when they pull into the site, they have plenty of parking to choose from. So, we tend to, to overpark our sites whenever possible.
Thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant? That I'd like to open up the public hearing. Do we have any cards? Okay, I'll close the public hearing, and we'll enter into discussion. Mr. Grant, will you...
Yeah, I just want to say, we, we did review this twice in Design Review, and one of the issues was requiring Spanish colonial revival, and was determined after a lot of discussion that going strictly straight Spanish colonial revival would actually be out of character with the balance of the project, and that we would try to make it compatible, yet still Spanish colonial materials. As far as those drive aisles coming in from the left with the stops, we looked at that and thought, there's no hammerhead, there's no turnaround, people are getting very deep down these aisles to try to maneuver in a 26 or 28-inch wide aisle and make a U-turn to go back the other way to try to get out. So, it was determined this is probably the most practical way to allow them to continue and exit out. Within the drive aisle itself, I think there's one, two, three, four, five, six, probably eight cars total that could fit without even getting to the drive aisle, and that seemed comfortable. Can you, John, go back to the staging document? It's back, I think, a couple of...
This is a little bit better. Hold on.
That one. Very good. And if it's there, I apologize for not seeing it. That staging area will not be used for the Christmas trees? They're going to have to relocate those up further or whatever?
The, the Christmas Tree area is located in the bottom, kind of just where the two boxes kind of overlap, so it'd be on the middle of the site plan down is where they, where they locate that. So, they locate it closest to that access road all the way down.
Okay, my only concern about that is that it makes it very hard or impossible to get to those parking spaces beyond that area towards Chase without going through Chase's site. So, I'm more comfortable if it would be up above or somewhere else. I just see that we're kind of killing the rest of that aisle with that, and let everybody else have discussion on that.
So, just point that out. You're talking about the staging area for the...
Yeah.